I hereby call the eighth day of the fourth special session of the 23rd Congress to order. May we all rise for a moment of silence and prayer. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso?
Senator Elia Maye.
Senator Arredoz? Senator Asher?
Doak Lomah.
Senator Christian? Senator Figuer? Senator Cullen?
Yes.
Senator Conman? Floor Leader Lawrence?
Hey, man.
Senator Marar? Senator Numea?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romaloe?
Hey, man.
Senator Segura?
Yes, good morning.
Senator Rosamal? Speaker Moses?
Hey.
Mr. Speaker, 12 members are present.
We have a quorum to transact business. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is item number four, reading of the Journal, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader Lawrence?
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning to you and honorable members, and good morning to all who are observing. I move that we descend with the reading of the Journal, Mr. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded. Does that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal? Discussion? Any objections? If none, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress is now dispensed with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number five, presidential communications. We are in your seat of number 23-509.
Members, please take note. That's probably an important one. The next item?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item six, FSM Supreme Court Communications. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seven, member communications, none also, Mr. Speaker. Item eight, departmental communications, we have one, and it's number 23-101.
I hope members have taken the time to look through that one. It's a very important audit. We haven't experienced an audit like that for a while, so I would hope that members, please take time to get familiar with it. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item nine, agency or governmental authority communications. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item 10, state communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item 11, state Supreme Court communications, none also, Mr. Speaker. Item 12, municipal or town communications, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker. Item 13, foreign government communications, none also, Mr. Speaker. Then item 14, miscellaneous communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Order of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The first item under the order of the day is item 15, standing committee reports. The first standing committee report is standing committee report number 23-88 on Congressional Resolution Number 23-244 from your Committee on External Affairs for adoption.
Acting Chair Rosamal?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good morning, and I move for the adoption of the said report.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopts standing committee report number 23-88. Discussion? Chairman Rosamal?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The report is on the subject of nomination of Ms. Nanpe to be TCM or Deputy Chief of Mission for our embassy in Japan. And the committee had hearing with the Department of Foreign Affairs and other witnesses, and based on the testimonies from the witnesses, the committee is reporting out favorably the nomination. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Rosamal. Any further discussion on the?
Speaker.
Who's that?
Yeah, may I ask Chief Clerk to note that I'm here in this chamber?
Yes, noted. Thank you, Vice Chairman Marar. Any further discussion? If no objection, question has been called for. We vote on the adoption of standing committee report number 23-88. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted standing committee report number 23-88. Next report, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next report is standing committee report number 23-89 on Congressional Resolution Number 23-246 from your Committee on External Affairs for adoption.
Vice Chairman Rosamal?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. As your acting chair of the Committee on External Affairs, I move for the adoption of the report, CR number, uh, C. SCR number 23-89. So move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopts standing committee report number 23-89. Discussion? Chairman, Acting Chair Rosamal?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Point of information, Mr. Speaker.
Say your point.
You said 89 or 88?
89. 88 was just adopted. So Chairman Rosamal?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The report as indicated in the title is to, on the nomination of Ms. Kim to be the Chief, I mean Deputy Chief of Mission for our new embassy in Australia. The committee again had hearing with the Department of Foreign Affairs and other witnesses, and all recommended the, uh, to the committee to report out this individual as they testified that she is more than, she is qualified for the position. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Any further discussion on the? No objection? Question has been called for. Debate is now closed. We will vote on the adoption of standing committee report number 23-89. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted standing committee report number 23-89. Next report, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next report is standing committee report number 23-90 on Congressional Resolution Number 23-248 from your Committee on Education for Adoption.
Chairman Rosamal?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. As Chairman of the Committee on Education, this report, uh, is talking or reporting out the nomination of Ms. Lin Narun to the Board of Regents for the COM FSM. And again, the committee had hearing with the nominee as well as the college and other interested individuals. Based on the testimony from both the nominee and the witnesses, your Committee on Education is recommending to this body for the adoption of the report and confirmation of the nomination. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If no objection, no further discussion. Debate is closed. We will now vote on the adoption of standing committee report number 23-90. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted standing committee report number 23-90. Next Chief Clerk, next report, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next report is standing committee report number 23-91 on Congressional Resolution Number 23-243 from your Committee on Eldon Social Affairs for Adoption.
Madam Chair Conman?
Thank you, Speaker. Move for adoption of SCR number 23-91.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number 23-91. Discussion? Madam Chair Conman?
Thank you, Speaker, and members. The committee met the nominee, Mr. Ari Skilling, to serve as the member of the Board of Trustees of the Social Security Administration. We had many witnesses from the Social Security Office and TOCE and from the President's Office. They presented their support that the nominee is fit for the job, I mean for the post, and that's all, we think.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the standing committee report?
Question.
No objection? Question has been called for, and if no objection, debate is now closed. We will vote on the adoption of the said report. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted standing committee report number 23-91. Next report, Chief Clerk.
None, Mr. Speaker. Please disregard the waiting list number 23-33.
Thank you. Members, take note. There will be a new waiting list tomorrow.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Okay, let's go back. Congress is back in session. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item 16, special committee reports, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item 17, for assignment of measures on communications, please refer to referral sheet number 23-76.
Point of reverence, Mr. Speaker.
Say your point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to you and members. I wish to rise on a point of reverence to introduce some very important individuals who are in the gallery observing our morning session. And I begin with our ambassador designate to Australia, Ms. Jane Chigal. Our nominee for the TCM for our embassy in Australia, Majelin Kim. Also in the gallery, Mr. Speaker and members, is Majelin Kim's mother, Yosko Kim. And I believe the young man with them is also a grandson of Ms. Kim. Also in the gallery, Mr. Speaker, we also have the floor leader of the Chuk State House of Representatives, Mr. Wayne Olap. We also have, in the gallery, Mr. Speaker, Ms. Eleanor S. Mori. Also in the gallery, Mr. Speaker and members, we have two students, COM students, KP Olap and Pelerin Sirai. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. It's always good to welcome our citizens to come and observe their Congress in action. So thank you for that, Vice Speaker. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item 18, unfinished business. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item 19, Bill Calendar. The first bill under the Bill Calendar now is Congressional Bill Number 23-202 for second and final reading. CB number 23-202 is a bill for an act to further amend section nine of Public Law Number 19-118 as amended by Public Laws numbers 19-125, 19-131, 19-135, 19-146, 19-160, 20-01, 20-14, 20-23, 20-74, 20-129, 22-152, 23-63, and 23-125 in order to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding capital and human resources development and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that Congress pass on first, on second and final reading, Congress Bill Number 23-202.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 23-202. Discussion?
Speaker? Short recess.
Short recess. Chairman Asher? We're still on discussion on CB number 23-202 for second and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We should offer an oral amendment to CB number 23-202. The amendment is simply, it's on page eight, line 15, to delete travel needs. And the amendment is simply to remove travel needs to make that appropriation solely for low-income housing. Thank you. I so move.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendment to CB number 23-202 be adopted, offered by Chairman Asher. Floor Leader Lawrence?
Thank you, Speaker. I move that Congress suspends any relevant rule that may impede our actions on the offered floor amendment by the good chairman of JNGO.
It's been moved and seconded that these rules that may impede our action be suspended, especially the rule prohibiting substantial amendments on second and final reading be suspended. Any objection to that said motion? If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the suspension say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. We are now on the discussion on the offered oral amendment made to CB number 23-202, offered by Chairman Asher. Any discussion? If none and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the offered floor amendment offered by Chairman Asher. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The offered oral amendment to CB number 23-202 has now been adopted. We now have CD two. CD one. Any other discussion? If none and no objection, question has been called for. We will vote by roll call of delegations, and please note that Madam Chair Abel Alfonso will be casting the vote for point B. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Arredoz. For the state of Ponte, Madam Chair Abel Alfonso. For the state of Koshai, Madam Chair Segura.
Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Rosamal. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, CB number 23-202, CD one. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the Bill Calendar is Congressional Bill Number 23-203 for second and final reading. CB number 23-203 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number 18-70 as amended by Public Laws numbers 18-98, 18-112, 18-122, 19-07, 19-24, 19-41, 19-52, 19-73, 19-82, 19-101, 19-114, 19-139, 20-07, 20-16, 20-36, 20-52, 20-81, 20-84, 20-15, 21-113, 21-123, 21-175, 21-192, 21-208, 21-222, 22-75, 22-130, and 23-82 by amending section six thereof to change the allottee of certain funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of Koshai State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer?
Thank you, Speaker. Move for the passage of Congress Bill Number 23-203 on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 23-203. Discussion? No objection? Question has been called for. And if no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on second and final reading to CB number 23-203 by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Arredoz. For the state of Ponte, Madam Chair Abel Alfonso. For the state of Koshai, Madam Chair Segura.
Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Rosamal. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, CB number 23-203. Next bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the Bill Calendar is Congressional Bill Number 23-204 for second and final reading. CB number 23-204 is a bill for an act to amend Public Law Number 22-157 as amended by Public Laws number 22-179 and 23-91 by amending section four thereof to change the use of fund previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Ponte State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer?
Thank you, Speaker. Move to pass Congress Bill Number 23-204 on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 23-204. Discussion?
Question?
No objection? Question has been called for. And if no objection, debate is closed. We will vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Arredoz. For the state of Ponte, Madam Chair Abel Alfonso. For the state of Koshai, Madam Chair Segura.
Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Rosamal. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, CB number 23-204. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As of now, we do not have any more bills, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Figuer?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to withdraw and place the following bills on the Bill Calendar for action. Congress Bill Number 23-207, 23-208, and 23-210. I so move.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion of the placement of CB number 23-207, 208, and 210. Discussion? Madam Chair Conman?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. The motion to place CR 23, CB 23-197 on today's Bill Calendar.
Okay. The motion is to include the 197 to the main motion, to include 197. Discussion? No objection? We will vote on said motion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The main motion has now been amended to include 207, 208, 210, and 197. Any further discussion on the motion to, for placement? If none, we will vote on the placement of CB 23-207, 23-208, 23-210, and 23-197. All those in favor of the said motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now placed the following bills on today's calendar for action, CB number 23-207, 208, 210, and 197. Chief Clerk, next bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the Bill Calendar now is Congressional Bill Number 23-207 for first reading. CB number 23-207 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number 21-180 as amended by Public Laws numbers 21-191, 21-234, 21-240, 22-21, 22-131, 22-146, and 23-111 by amending section three thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of Koshai State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move that Congress pass on first reading, Congress Bill 23-207.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading, CB number 23-207. Discussion? No objection? Question has been called for. Debate is now closed. We will vote on the passage of CB number 23-207 by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso? Senator Arredoz? Senator Asher?
Yes.
Senator Christian? Senator Figuer? Senator Cullen?
Yes.
Senator Conman? Floor Leader Lawrence?
Yes.
Senator Marar? Senator Numea?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romaloe?
Hey, man.
Senator Segura?
Yes.
Senator Rosamal? Speaker Moses?
Hey.
Mr. Speaker, we have 13 affirmative votes to the said bill under first reading.
Thank you. With that, we have passed on first reading, CB number 23-207. Next bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the Bill Calendar now is Congressional Bill Number 23-208 for first reading. CB number 23-208 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number 22-86 as amended by Public Laws numbers 22-101, 22-102, 22-106, 22-140, 22-147, 22-161, 22-168, 22-185, 22-197, 23-06, 23-12, 23-50, 23-64, and 23-114 by amending section three thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other public projects and social programs for the people of Koshai State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move that Congress pass on first reading, Congress Bill Number 23-208.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading, CB number 23-208. Discussion? No objection? Question has been called for. We will vote on first reading, CB number 23-208 by roll. Twenty-three Dash Two Oh Eight by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso. Senator Arudas. Senator Asher. Senator Christian. Senator Figuer. Senator Colin.
Yes.
Senator Kahnman. Floor Leader Lawrence. Senator Marar. Senator Numaya.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romalo.
Aye.
Senator Segura.
Yes.
Senator Urusamal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, we have thirteen affirmative votes to the said bill under first reading.
Thank you. With that, Congress has passed CB Number Twenty-three Dash Two Oh Eight on second and final reading. Next bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill Number Twenty-three Dash Two Ten for first reading. CB Number Twenty-three Dash Two Ten is a bill for an act to further amend public law number twenty dash thirty-one as amended by public laws numbers twenty dash forty-one, twenty dash fifty, twenty dash seventy-seven, twenty dash one thirteen, twenty-one dash twenty-four, twenty-one dash forty-five, twenty-one dash eighty-three, twenty-one dash one oh one, twenty-one dash one thirty-three, twenty-one dash two oh four, twenty-one dash two twenty, twenty-two dash seventy-nine, twenty-two dash one thirteen, twenty-two dash one fifty, and twenty-three dash sixty-five by amending section three thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Koshai State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer?
Thank you, Speaker. Move that Congress pass Congress Bill Twenty Pass on first reading Congress Bill Twenty-three Dash Two Ten.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading, CB Number Twenty-three Dash Two Ten. Discussion? If no objection, question has been called for. Debate is now closed. We will vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso. Senator Ar- Arudas. Senator Asher. Senator Christian. Senator Figuer. Senator Colin. Senator Kahnman. Floor Leader Lawrence. Senator Marar. Senator Numaya.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romalo.
Aye.
Senator Segura.
Yes.
Senator Urusamal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, we have thirteen affirmative votes to the said bill under first reading.
With that, we have passed on first reading, CB Number Twenty-three Dash Two Ten. Next bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill Number Twenty-three Dash One Ninety-seven for first reading. CB Number Twenty-three Dash One Ninety-seven is a bill for an act to amend section two oh three of Title Forty-One of the Code of the Federated States of Margonisha annotated for the purpose of increasing the number of members of the ESM Medical Licensing Board to eliminate all references to education and for other purposes.
Madam Chair Kahnman?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Move to recommend CP Number Twenty-three Dash One Ninety-seven to the Committee on A.S.A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that CB Number Twenty-three Dash One Ninety-seven be recommitted to the Committee on Health and Social Affairs. Any objection to the said motion? If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CB Number Twenty-three Dash One Ninety-seven has been recommitted to the committee. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
As of now, we do not have any more bills, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
As of now, we do not have any more bills, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item twenty, Resolution Calendar. The first resolution under the resolution calendar is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-four. Please note that this is attached to Standing Committee Report Number Twenty-three Dash Eighty-Eight. CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-four is a resolution for adoption. Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-four is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Ms. Shelly Yoriko Nambey to serve as the Deputy Chief of Mission at the ESM Embassy in Tokyo, Japan.
Chairman Urusamal?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I beg the indulgence of this Congress and request for your favorable action on all the nominations. I think we owe to the administration to be fully equipped with the number with the employees that they need to have to help this nation and to help our people. So I appeal to you to please let's continue the good spirit of confirming nominations. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Urusamal.
And I move for the adoption of the resolution and confirm the individual. Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-four. Discussion? If no objection, debate is closed. This is a nomination, so we will vote by secret ballot. Chief Clerk, please pass the ballots. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, please announce the results.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have twelve yeses and one no.
With that, we have adopted CR Number Twenty-three Dash Forty-four. May we give the nominee a round of applause? Next resolution, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-six for adoption. Please note that this is attached to Standing Committee Report Number Twenty-three Dash Eighty-nine. CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-six is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Ms. Mageline Marie Kim to serve as the Deputy Chief of Mission at the ESM Embassy in Canberra, Australia.
Chairman Urusamal?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I so move for the adoption of the said resolution and seek your support, all of our support. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that CB Number Twenty-three Dash Two Oh Three be adopted by Congress. Discussion? It is another nomination, so no objection. Debate is closed. Because it's a nomination, we will vote by secret ballot. Chief Clerk, please pass the pass out the ballots. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, please announce the results.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. All thirteen members that are present voted for the nominee under the said resolution.
Thank you. Please let us give her a round of applause. Next resolution, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-eight for adoption. Please note that this is attached to Standing Committee Report Number Twenty-three Dash Ninety. CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-eight is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Ms. Lin Naroon to serve as a member of the Port of Regents of the College of Margonitia ESM or COM ESM representing the national government.
Chairman Urusamal?
Again, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move for the adoption of the said resolution and plead with the members to please confirm the nominee nomination. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-six. Discussion? No objection. Question has been called for. And debate is now closed. And it is another nomination, so we will vote by secret ballot. Chief Clerk, please pass out the ballots. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, please announce the results.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have twelve yeses and one no.
With that, we have confirmed the nomination. Next item, Chief Clerk? Next bill, resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-three for adoption. Please note that this is attached to Standing Committee Report Number Twenty-three Dash Ninety-one. CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-three is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Ari Skilling to serve as a member of the Port of Trustees of the Social Security Admin Administration of the Federated States of Margonitia representing the national government.
Madam Chair Kahnman?
Thank you, Speaker and members. I move for adoption of CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Forty-three. Please four yes for the nominee. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that CR Number Twenty-three Dash Forty-three be adopted. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, and no objection, debate is closed. This is a nominee another nominee, so we will vote by secret ballot. Chief Clerk, please pass out the ballots. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, please announce the results.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have eleven yeses and two nos.
With that, we've confirmed the nominee for to be a member of the Board of Social Security. Let's let's give her a round of applause. Next resolution, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As of now, we do not have any more resolutions, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
Chairman Goland?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I I move to withdraw CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight and Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-nine. So move.
Can you restate? I didn't quite get it.
Uh, Speaker, I move to withdraw CP Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight and Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-nine. CR. So move, Mr. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight and Two Fifty-nine or to place CR Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight and Two Fifty-nine on today's calendar for action. Any objections? If none, we will vote on the motion. All those in favor of said motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. We have now placed CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight and CR Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-nine on today's calendar for action. Short recess. Chief Clerk, first resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight for adoption. CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight is a resolution approving and accepting a grant from the government of Japan in the amount of four billion five hundred ninety-seven million yen to contribute to the implementation of the project for expansion of Pompe Port, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Goland?
Move for adopt CR Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight?
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR Two R CR Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight. Discussion?
Speaker.
Chairman Urusamal?
Are you to the floor leader? Speaker, are we in recess or?
No, we're in session.
Yeah, just perhaps maybe one of the members can educate me. I know when we talk about this is from Japan, right?
Yes.
And when we talk about grants or from the government of Japan, I recall for the OTA from Japan, there is a it's an annual almost annual thing and it's rotated rotates amongst the four states. Now, this very big amount of money, is it gonna delay? Are i- is Japan using the granite to complete this very worthy project, meaning looking at ship, looking at the other infrastructure? Is is this gonna delay request from the other for other infrastructure?
Anybody care to venture an answer? Go ahead, Chairman Goland.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. For this kind of project, protection of this kind of project is very huge amount. Twenty million before, it's not used to be can accommodate the renovation or extension of this kind of project. Nowadays, the thirty million, it's I think it's pretty much enough, but it's very important because it's over to the our port to be fixed, not just Pompe Bay. All the four states will be fixed. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman. Was that enough, Chairman Urusamal?
Yeah, thank you very much, Speaker. And I thank the good chairman for this response to my small question. What I'm thinking, when we were doing the extension of the airport here, what I understood to be the case was the rotation, because the amount was bigger than the annual rotation from the government of Japan. It had to cover two or three years. And therefore, other states were not getting theirs until after money was enough for the airport extension here. So my question, is this gonna be the same kind of arrangement? Delaying others from getting OTA from Japan, or it's just an extra amount of money that they were able Japan was able to find and is giving up?
Well, there was no mention of rotation. When the project was first initiated, I believe Pompe State went out looking for funding and then ADB was willing to fund it. And then in two thousand and fifteen, Congress gave the sovereign guarantee, but the executive branch refused to accept the grant, which turned out for turned out to be a plus because after that, when it took long and then ADB have had to withdraw the funding, Japan stepped in and said they would fund. And then COVID came and the project was put on hold for about four years. And now it's the grand awards are flowing now.
So, Speaker, in your statement is to say that this money because of COVID, four years, nothing was done?
That and no no other request to that program was made by any other state.
Program, Speaker, are you talking about the OTA from Japan?
Yes.
Because I know the state of Yap has been asking Japan for one festival, but I I know we got the one from People's Republic of China. So I'm not sure if there issue that there was no request, because unless foreign affairs were was hiding the request from other states, I thought there were requests for.
Short recess, Speaker. The Japan. Short recess.
Short recess. Go back. We're still on discussion of CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight. Any further discussion?
Question?
Question?
No objection. Question has been called for. We will now vote on CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-eight. Next resolution, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-Nine. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-nine for adoption. CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-nine is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of twenty-four thou- twenty-four million nine hundred thousand dollars from the Asian Development Bank to fund the sustainable road investment and climate resilient project, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Goland.
Move for adopt said resolution.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-nine. Discussion.
Question.
If no objection, question has been called for. We will vote on the adoption of CR Number Twenty-three Dash Fifty-nine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR Number Twenty-three Dash Two Fifty-nine. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As of now, we do not have any more resolutions.
Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is Item Twenty-One, Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
If you have any measures to introduce, please pass them forward to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Point of privilege.
Say your point.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wish to, uh, for this body to recognize and welcome, um, two individuals that are here with us observing our session. Start off with, uh, Mr. Silberio Mathias. Let's all give him a round of applause. And Mrs. Caroline Senda Adolf.
Thank you. We always welcome our our citizens to come and observe the Congress in action. So if you have any bills or measures, please pass them forward to Chief Clerk. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is Item Twenty-Two, Miscellaneous Business.
Any miscellaneous business? Chairman Rossumal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I just wish to take this opportunity during this, uh, section of our order of the day to thank each and every one of us for our affirmative action on the, uh, nominations. I think the President would be very appreciative of our action. And, uh, our message with the actions of our Congress is that the executive branch should start or continue to be busy, uh, doing their work to implement what is needed to be implemented and to work on improving our relations with the other governments in the world and especially to maintain peace not only in the into China, uh, into Pacific region, but, uh, throughout the world. So, thank you very much. And I am happy that, uh, as Acting Chair of the Committee on External Affairs, I the committee was man- uh, committee managed to get uh, at least those two confirmed. And I look forward to working with you again, uh, if there are other nominations, to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Rossumal. Just to let you know, I really appreciated your help during the session on on the matters of, uh, foreign affairs. So I thank you. I guess that's why the Lord is shining down on me right now, but I feel like I'm burning in hell. So any more miscellaneous business? If none, next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is Item Twenty-three, Announcements.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I ask that your Committee on Ways and Means and other members can join us after, uh, for a short meeting, brief meeting after this morning session in the Members' Lounge, and the subject matter is the Supplemental Budget.
Thank you very much, Chairman Figuer. Members, please take note, that's a very important discussion that's gonna happen on the Supplemental Budget. Madam Chair Abel Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have no announcements at the moment.
Chairman Asher.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on J and G will have a public hearing at one P M. Today. And this is an oversight with, uh, Department of Justice, uh, the subject of the independent prosecutor and other matters that we want to raise with them. Thank you.
Chairman Goland.
Your Government Law Hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Goland. Chairman Nemea.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have none at this time.
Madam Chair Conman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have one announcement, but before I do that, I would like to thank everyone for supporting the nominees for Ms. Kim and, uh, for nominating also Mr. Ari Skilling. Our announcement for today is, uh, the Committee on Health and Social Affairs. I would like to urge members that we come and we go through that, uh, CP Number Twenty-three Dash One Ninety-seven. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chairman Rossumal.
Uh, thank you very much, Speaker. Your Committee on Education, uh, running out of time, is asking to have a very short meeting before the session tomorrow morning relating to the nomination of Yolanta Mori to the Board of Directors of the Social Security Program.
Scholarship.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Rossumal, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, again, Mr. Speaker. About nine o'clock tomorrow morning, very short meeting of the committee to, uh, review the nomination of Ms. Yolanta Mori to the Board of, uh, to the Scholarship Board. And, uh, we would like to have the Acting Chief of Staff and the nominee present, as well as the President's Office and, uh, other interested individuals. And with that, if no objection, I move that this Congress stands in recess until tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, so I can have my lunch. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at- tomorrow morning at ten. Objections? If none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands in recess until tomorrow morning at ten.